If you haven't been in there, don't go. Trust me. Do not go there. It's not good. And it's no way they're ADA accessible. That would have to be addressed as well.
I've got a stack of newspaper clippings here. With articles about our... From the fire at the original site, to looking at various options. And it's just been very clear throughout this process that having a museum is a key part of our culture and who we are here.
I couldn't agree more.
And that it's certainly a priority for a whole lot of people who would really love to see this actually come to fruition. And not just get talked about and talked about and, but if we can make the pieces set together to get that collection moved and displayed in some fashion.
That's what, that's the board's goal. And with council approval, we can continue to move forward with that. But it does take council approval. And that's why we're asking, within the 45 days, would the council please make a decision? Yes, we want a museum? Or nah, maybe not. It's up to the council to decide that through your discussion, through your votes. Personally, folks, I couldn't implore you more than to say, please say yes. Please say yes. We as a board then can move forward with you as a group, the whole, the bunch of us. Get this accomplished sooner rather than later. And if we can get that building up to a standard that we can bring the artifacts into it, out of storage where it is now, 4,000, 4,500 a month? John, George?
It's, it's closer to $5,000 to $6,000 a month.
Alright. There is a heck of a savings. So, you know, it doesn't take long to figure out where that.
The male wrinkle that we see is, at this point, we're banking on getting the money so the department comes. And if we get that money, we've got something that we can work with. If that doesn't come through, or until it comes through, I don't know that there's a lot that we can do in terms of working towards these repairs unless we've got, unless that grant from, oh, the Sager Fund that gives us something to work with meanwhile.
You're correct there. But if we can get some planning done prior to that, we can hit the ground running. If we wait until that funding comes through and then start planning, we're that much farther behind.
So, can I make a few comments? Oh, go ahead.
There you go.
I may be one of your major figures, I haven't spoken before.
Can you speak into your microphone? Can you?
I, I'm all for the museum. I used to annually attend a dinner at the Armory and used to every year spend lots of time walking through the exhibits when it was there. And really enjoyed the, enjoyed the whole atmosphere that was presented at the former, at the Armory. When I heard it burnt down, I was upset. And then when I heard that we received almost 60 million interest, I'm excited to see what would come with all that money coming to the museum. If you had my vote, I would like to see every last painting. It's going to build a great museum since it came from that. So, just know you have my, my vote. Go for it. Go for it.
Thank you. George?
I was just gonna make a couple of comments. The fire was disastrous. My estimate, maybe 75 to 80% of the artifacts gone. Then I sent off the restoration man, they were brought back to the warehouse. In looking at it, there's a lot of those things that were brought back to the warehouse and might not make it back to the museum. They were too badly damaged, they were undocumented, we have no problems on them. We have some very valuable things there. Sam Ben's deed, some letters signed by President Lincoln. There's some really, really neat things there. We're in a technological age right now. So, a lot of those heavy things kind of go away and you look, you come up on the computer. So, we have so very few items to move. The move is going to be easy. The planning for that has been going on for a long time. We have some great ideas, even if we're not, can't even put people in the museum. We have some great ideas to put some exhibits, some lighted exhibits in the windows, in the staging area, right in the windows to begin with. Your very heavy items are going to be on the ground floor. They're not going upstairs. So, it, it's, the ability to bring in donations has been greatly hampered the last couple of years. Because people in this town don't trust that we're going to have a museum. It's not happening. And so, they're saying, talking to me, they're talking to all of us, why would we donate anything right now? When we don't know whether it'll ever be displayed, or whether it'll be handled properly, on and on. We had great momentum right after the fire. There was tremendous motion. Then we had an insurance settlement that had to go through. And the, the light was starting to come through the curtains, and COVID hit. And we were like, you guys, you can come in this building, volunteers can go in that building. So, it's, it's an easy start. It's an ease-in start. It's, it's, taking it out of the warehouse, it's a drag on a lot of money right now. And moving it into a city-owned business. And then evolving into, I look at it as a long-term project. Maybe, maybe my other board members don't, but you evolve into a museum. Maybe it might not be in that building. Maybe it'll go somewhere else. But it is a good location. It's pretty typical of your 1920 vintage department stores. With a great grand floor, big staircase in the back with a mezzanine balcony. Don't remember Brennan's out where the toys were upstairs. And then you got these offices around that can be used for exhibit rooms, it could be used for other purposes too. The Salvation Army uses the west part of the building. They'll be out of there within a couple of years. That portion could be used for something else too. So, I mean, we looked at 12 or 13 buildings. They all have the same issues. You just can't move into a building built in the 1920s and not expect a leak. Or the sewer running underneath the elevator shaft, or whatever. So, the potential to really do good is good. The history is what, what kills me, is you couldn't have a better history than Aberdeen, Hoaklim, Montesano, Olympia, Tacoma, Vancouver. It was timber, it was fish, it was 13 or 14 different nationalities coming into this country and fighting against each other like they are today, but working together too, along with the indigenous people that were here. And if we don't, if we don't show that to our citizens here in this town that have donated, and donated that 80% that was lost, that we have, that we care about that. And that history is so rich and so deep that we need to, we need to expand on it. We need to make it go. There's already 11 museums in Gray's Harbor. What town doesn't have one? The biggest, most important town doesn't have one. And there's no excuse for it. There's absolutely no excuse for it. We are being watched by the whole state, maybe the whole country, we're kind of a poster child. We made so many improvements to so many museums around this state, in their fire detection systems, their inventory systems, what to do and how to run a museum, just from here. Well, we're looking out at other museums to see how they are. And using some of their plans and how they, how they do it, how they interact with their cities. And that's where we're headed. But if we sit here and just don't do anything and don't move, we, we're not going to get grants, the same as we're not going to get donations. A lot of the grant programs will not operate unless you're an operating museum. So, if we say we're not going to have a museum, and oh god, we got labor contracts and fire departments and police departments, the bill and everything like that, and you just gotta keep pushing this down on the floor, down on the floor. You guys figure out how to get money. We can't figure out how to get money because we can't have money unless we're a museum, unless we're operating as a museum. So, we need to get going. And I'll get off in a second.
Thank you, George. The other, the other question that needs to be answered, and George didn't address it, maybe I shouldn't either, but what are we going to do with all that stuff if we don't have a museum? A lot of that stuff cannot be sent back. Some of it can. But what are we going to do with the rest of it? Where's, you know, what are the citizens of Aberdeen and Gray's Harbor going to say? Oh, they blew it. So, that's a little strong, but you know, I, I think there's a sentiment out there that says, let's see what they're going to do. And I certainly hope that you as a council and us as a museum board can get together, put our heads together, work this out and make it happen, and make it happen sooner rather than later. The end.
So, I think we know what yes looks like, but how do we say yes in a way that helps you start to do what, I think, what you want to do? How do we say yes so that you can say, yes, we have a museum? And, and I think we also ask ourselves, well, what does a museum look like? I think we, you know, we get wrapped around the axle thinking this has to be a fully formed plan, and it doesn't. We bought an old building. And, because, and we want, I think that this, the statement that we can be part of downtown revitalization and be invested with our business community and what happens down there is, is powerful. But it doesn't mean we have to have a fully formed plan right now. If we empower Ruth to go get money for a museum slash visitor center that will open in downtown Aberdeen if they give us the money, we will have a museum. It just won't, but some museums take 20 years. I mean, we're, we don't have the ability to, to fully fund it. So, we're going to have to do it a little bit at a time. Let's have a short-term goal of this legislative session and see what we can come up with, and how much money can we get? And then what can we do with that money? And then, and then while we're doing that, we figure out, okay, when we get there, what, what's another thing that we can do? And eventually, it'll be like the Armory. The Armory was a rundown, empty shell of a building when, a little bit at a time, it, over the years, it became what? The treasure that we lost. And, and so, the easiest way to kill something is to tell these volunteers, or to be asking them, well, what's your plan? Well, our plan is to have a museum, and we can do that in a, in a month if we wanted to, because that building has an occupancy. We could, you know, go in, get, you know, they, it was open as a business. I don't know why we can't let them have a presence in the windows and, and, and start showing some activity even before the legislative session ends. But those are all, I'm probably getting a little bit ahead of myself now. But I do think, you know, we can have a museum this year if we, if we empower Ruth to go get the money. And if we get that money. And if she doesn't get the money, and we don't get that money, then we find another way. You know, and, and it doesn't have to come out of the reserves. We, we just, you know, the way.
If, if there wouldn't have been a fire, that money wouldn't exist. And it's, ethically, I think we were obligated to put back something to windows, floors, and ceiling. Start there. You know, get the fundamentals into what we lost in the Armory, to where we have a space to store our stuff where it's not a cost. And spend the money that was given to us for insurance that would not exist unless there was a fire, which is, is bothered me since the beginning, is why we have this money that wouldn't fly out. We, it wouldn't be part of the budget unless there was a score for fire. And we've never came to, I've never understood why it's been, it was the importance.
The museum was reimbursed. They didn't own the building. They owned the contents of the building, their part. The other part was being leased by other people. And the city owned the building, so the city got the insurance that, that they paid for. And then they reimbursed the museum for the collection.
For the value of the collection, correct.
So, they were leasing the building, they didn't own it. So, they wouldn't get the building fund.
Absolutely. They weren't leasing the building. We weren't paying them $25,000 to $30,000 a year to run a museum for us.
Oh, okay. So, the building belonged to the city though?
Yes, it did. But the fact of the matter is, the museum did lose its home. And it seems out of all that insurance money we got, we could put a couple million back into the home and the museum.
Didn't we?
No.
Did we?
Not the building. Not the building.
And, and that's true. It was a city-owned museum. And we, our museum was in the Armory. And so, yes, we owned the building, but we also owned a museum that we, that we've not reinvested in substantially since.
With new windows and floors, that Sears building, the ceiling, you could look very, yeah, new roof, ceiling, and floors, that could look like a really nice building. It could be a really nice space if we could even provide, like with the old Armory, see with like the banquet dining.
I can't hear you, babe.
Yeah, can you bring your microphone?
With new windows, floors, and ceiling, and that new Sears building, the Sears building could look amazing. Maybe we could get back to where we were with, do we have any stable place like the old Armory was for to store and to, you know, to where we're with banquets and whatnot. Same, but a little more eloquently, the first time I said it.
Those few things though aren't enough for the museum to be operational. That's like the minimum stuff.
The operation, the operation of the museum itself, I think should be turned over to some kind of an operation other than the city. City owns the building? Great. City even owning the collection, that's fine too. But have someone else, some other entity as the operator, the manager, or whatever you want to call that person or entity, actually doing the running. City has enough on its plate. They don't need that as well. So, and, and someone that, that is familiar with and comfortable with actually putting a museum together, designing space, again, with consulting and with, with the blessing of the city, and that, again, those negotiation points. All of that. But the first thing that, that we as a museum board are asking is the city council's blessing to go ahead with plans to fix the building, to be able to move the collection, to get the ball rolling. Liz?
When I looked at the building, and it was the first time I've been inside since it was operating as a secondhand store by the self-creation company. So, to see it in bare bones, walls, floors, really opened up possibilities in my mind. I could see, wow, there's a lot of floor space here. There's certainly areas for doing work on different parts of the collection. This building does have potential, absolutely. But what concerns me most is, and I'm looking at the PCS seismic report, and it's just page after page saying, bearing walls are inadequate, the, the line of shear is inadequate. That, I mean, just point after point after point.
There isn't a building in town built in that era that will meet any of those modern-day criteria. And that story, we, it just, it isn't going to happen. What kind of retrofit would need, would be needed? That's where the engineering studies come in. I know there has been some of that done. I don't know if it's been done in total or not. But, yeah, I mean, can it even be brought up to seismic standards? That's another question. Does it need to be brought up to seismic standards? Another question that needs to be answered. So, there's, you're right, there are a lot of questions that need to be answered. But let's start answering them.
I agree. I, I think also having the vacant building across the street being renovated and painted, or, or the city to leverage that with the.
Which, which building you're talking about?
The Dover building.
The Dover building? Okay. Yeah, alright.
Would just, would just help that part of town that really come alive and more vibrant. So, I, I certainly get that. And I, I came across an article about the Empire State Building being renovated. It's about the same era, built in the 1930s. It took 10 years to renovate it, including a new elevator. And, and that cost-wise, it was, to renovate, it was certainly more economic than to build a new building. And, and I appreciate that there's a number of reasons to repurpose and reclaim existing buildings, especially these old ones. It's got beautiful timbers.
There, there's a lot of good things about that building. It's a 100-year-old building, folks. It needs to be upgraded. There's no question about that. The board knows that, the museum board is well aware of that. But I think to start with, the roof, the windows, and the elevator, those are things that, those can be done. Any other retrofitting, any other upgrades, those can be looked at, can be studied. And you can study the things till the cows come home and still not come up with answers. But I think that getting the right firm to, to look at the building. But I think that getting the right firm to look at the building and say, "Yeah, you can do these things and make it safer. If you don't do these things..." Whatever. I mean, there's ways to make improvements to the building to make it safe. Is it going to be seismically safe? Who knows? That's up to engineers, cost studies, all of that. Those are not... Those are questions I can't answer. I have no expertise in that whatsoever, but I know that those are questions that need to be answered.
You know, Dave, with these... With all these reports that we got in, they're good basis for building upon. And I say basis, I mean, way down. Because any building in the downtown that you take and you bring it up to the top-notch peak condition of seismic engineering and all that stuff, still not gonna stop it from sinking in the muck when we have the big earthquake.
That's right.
In this area. So, I mean, come on. Seventy-five pounds per square foot. George, what do you do when you go out there and the road says so much per square foot?
Go out on the road and go get a permit.
You stretch it out. You add an extra axle or...
Yeah, that's what you do is...
Your load is from here to here, and there's lots of seventy-five pounds, and it's exponential as well. So you lay a sheet of plywood down on a spot that'll only handle seventy-five pounds per square foot, and it spreads it out. I mean, there's just so many things that you can get into with all that kind of stuff. But what I see is, what we're being asked to do today is move forward with these issues that we've talked about and that we've recognized in forty-five days. And we're looking more at following up on these funds and moving from that point. So I think that's where the question is today. Are we gonna take money that we have in reserves right now and move forward with this basic projects over there? Or are we gonna wait until we find out if we get this money?
I think we just... The board just wants an answer. Do we want a museum? That's what we want.
We do want a museum, and I think we've... I don't know how... We haven't made it clear that we want to move forward on this.
Well, because the board... The council was presented with six options. And number one on that option list was get rid of it. And that's what sparked this whole workshop. Ruth came to us with six options in October. And so, the board says, "Okay, is the city council and the mayor gonna support a museum or not?" That's what we're asking. That doesn't mean these things have to happen in forty-five days. It doesn't mean that they necessarily even have to start in forty-five days. We just want to know, is the council gonna support a museum?
Well, I guess I can be blunt and give an answer to where that came from in October is, we were working on budget pretty heavily, and I said, and I've told the board this before, the museum is not my top priority. And there's a lot of things that have to come into play before the city's gonna have funds to do a museum. We had a unique thing, Dave. Dave, when you were talking about the Armory, we had a unique situation there. We had a large building that had adequate space for a museum.
Good lady.
And we did a lot of maintenance and repairs on that building over the years. But we had a tenant in that building that was paying all the bills. The city wasn't paying all the bills. And we supported the museum. I don't remember... I think it was $25,000 a year, but it might even went down at a time. But anyway, that's how that worked. It was very unique. This is totally different. This is the city owning the building, the city paying the bills, and so on, and it's a big, different thing. So there's been a lot of things come up in the last three years that have taken priorities. And we have an opportunity now. We bought a building. We got a good deal on it. I think the building's well worth what we paid for it and then some. We have an opportunity, and everybody can cross their fingers that the legislature agrees, and we get these funds back, and then we can decide, you know, which one of these options and so forth, and move forward with that. Put some of these repairs into that building that it needs so we can get the darned artifacts into it and quit paying the rent. And that's basically where we're at.
Question. So let's say everything went well, and the legislator was gonna reimburse us the money. When will we find out?
Probably with the announcement of the cap. Once everything's finalized.
So somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, I do have a question, though, that if we don't get the funds, does the council still want a museum?
We still have a $300,000 bill that we paid for. We still have, you know...
It still needs repairs. Or it sits there like all the other empty buildings downtown, which is a shame.
Dancing hall. Where a museum is still a $300,000 investment that needs, it's gonna need repair regardless. And if just be irresponsible and let it sit and deteriorate.
The idea of this money recovery, which is awesome, and I'm really proud of our city administrator for digging that out, brings us to a point where we might have... If we get it, we'll have an advantage to get things started on this museum. And I think bringing the visitor's center in there and using the money for the building, which will house the visitor's center, also the museum, is just a great opportunity financially. So...
Mayor Shinn?
Yes.
One of the things we have mentioned at our museum board meeting but never really decided is, I don't think that... Personally, I don't think the two of those are mutually exclusive. That the museum can be a visitor's center and vice versa. They can work very... They can be very, very harmoniously integrated.
Yeah.
And I've always... I agree. I've always thought that. I tried to go the other way around with the museum in the Gateway Center, but that didn't work out. And the darn Gateway Center was just too much money. And so it didn't work out. We have another opportunity now, and if... I think the biggest key to this working that'll help out the quickest is if we get this funding that we should have already received back. Katie?
If the council makes a commitment to the museum, is the city financially in a position to where it would be possible to commit any sort of funding before that is committed? Or say that it isn't? Or does it mean that the money will come from cuts elsewhere?
I believe that we have some funds, and I believe we should be spending them. I don't think the city should be sitting on dollars in reserve that's more than we need. It should be spent to benefit our citizens. What I was hoping for is we could pull things together and use that money to leverage funds for new fire stations. But that doesn't seem to be rolling along very well either. So we do have some funds, and they could be spent. It just depends on what the council wants to do. Liz?
So forty-five days puts us at April 1st. And I don't know that we'll have more information to go off of than what we have tonight to say, conceptually, yes, we want a museum.
That's a good start.
Where the money's gonna come from remains to be seen. And I printed up four pages of grants and contracts that are available on the Historic Washington website that all of you are probably very familiar with. But, I mean, we could start moving forward with queuing up for some of this outside money. And that would be beneficial.
And that's another good point. If we were to get this commerce money back, we might even be able to use some of it for leveraging other grants. So...
I would definitely, you know, it will have specific uses like construction or design and planning, so I would have to...
Probably not.
And again, it's on a reimbursement basis, so...
Well, that was a good thought. Yeah, it's like the Heritage Grant. It's out there. It's available. It's a good grant, but it's gotta... It takes a lot of pocket money to... What's the word I'm trying to say? You gotta put some in the pot.
A match.
Yeah, it takes a lot of match to really make it amount to anything.
But not all require a match. And we got our investment in the building, which is a match.
Yeah.
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 Well, I'm not trying to... I'm not trying to talk anybody out of this. I'm just saying, that's why we've been kind of holding off on the funds because I was hoping to use those funds to leverage for new fire stations. And...
Potentially transferring those, though?
Yeah.
No, what we have now in general funds, what I'm talking about. There's an amount of money in general funds now above what we would normally need for reserves. Not very much, but there's some.
We've allocated $500,000, I think, to APD and to fire so that they can...
Maintenance.
Yeah. Keep those buildings from somewhat operable.
How often are we using that scope truck we have for the consumer systems? Could we lease that out and make some money?
Well, that's probably impossible. It wouldn't make the millions that we need for all these things.
We spent $700,000 on that. I just really would like to see us commit something to getting a space for our museum again. We've committed to other things that cost more. This makes a lot of sense to me to get that. Without that small... I mean, from what I remember of the museum previously, a lot of it was the fire truck and photographs. But without that being on display, we're on the brink of losing our history. I mean, it goes from storage to where? I mean, we...
Okay, Liz?
Some of us were at Port presentation this morning to talk about the expansion of the, I think, Terminal Four down there. There's a whole lot of money being invested in growing the port, which hopefully grows the economy of Graves Harbor, Kelly, and the city of Aberdeen as well. But again, proportionately, I think the city has really done a lot of legwork on the levy project, which benefits the port. And I'd like to see us talking with the port, seeing us talking with the businesses down there about, hey, it's time to give back and support this local economy in this community. And what can you kick in to help us on some of our priorities?
Hey, thanks.
Deanna, you have your hand up?
Yes. Well, I just think that we can be... I think we can ask... If we answer the question, yes, we want a museum, and that helps them immediately. And yes, we want a museum. We just don't know what it looks like yet. We've got some skin in the game. We've got a $325,000 building that we bought and paid for and needs some work. And if we say, yes, we want a museum, then that helps. And we try and find some partners or go get some money or ask for a grant, and the goal is a visitor's center slash museum, that's a lot different than waiting till we know for sure from the legislature. That's just like kicking the can again. And if the legislature doesn't, you know, re-gift us those funds, then we go back to problem-solving. But yes, we want a museum. And I think if we approach it that way, the goal is a museum, and we have our ions of funds that we might get. If those funds don't come in, then we'll figure out another way. And we're just not gonna take no for an answer. And I think if we can go forward with that level of commitment, then we will end up with a museum. We just don't know what it looks like yet. At least we know where it might go.
So we can take action tonight?
No.
But can we communicate a consensus?
You can communicate a consensus.
And I think if we have that on the agenda, that also is a good written document that we voted that, yes, we are... And it might not happen next month. It's gonna take some time, but it's the elephant, one bite at a time.
Would you like a committee report with cost estimates or what the museum board has requested be done to the building?
Yeah, that probably would be helpful.
Okay.
I'd like to... We've had this discussion at the last meeting. The issue of what some things are gonna cost can change by a factor of maybe two or three hundred percent depending on the status of that building. And right now, we don't know what we're costing to. We don't know what we're required to do. And that is a detailed discussion, and probably would be best served by the council allowing the discussion to go forward with Michael House, our Department of Historic Preservation, to review that building as a first step. And I'd like the council to think about that because that's gonna be the most informative part of getting costing. And if we don't do that, then we're guessing all the way along.
The other thing to keep in mind, and I don't remember who brought it up, George, I believe, no matter what we as a community do, you as a council, and us as a board, and the community as a whole, that museum will not be up and running as a museum in six months, in a year, maybe not even for two or three years or longer. It's a long-term project. It's not instantaneous. Yeah?
But if we get those funds from the legislature, we're gonna have a visitor's center with some museum exhibits in it. That gets us closer to a museum.
Yes, definitely. And yes, we can share hope and pray and keep Ruth and keep supporting her for her efforts to go to the legislature and get those funds. And yes, folks, that would be a substantial gift and a substantial way to help start things. But again, it comes back to having the building usable. And right now, it really isn't usable for what we want to do. Barely usable as a warehouse, and I'm not even sure that it would pass muster that way.
So council members, without voting, just kind of lift your hand if you have a consensus to approve with what Councilmember Shaw was saying. One?
I don't disagree with what Councilmember Shaw said.
That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking for a vote. I just wanted to, you know... Does anybody else want to say that? I just wondered this, you know, does anybody else wanna say that?
Yeah, I'll say that.
So I see four, five?
Ruth says to ask the quietest people in the room, so.
Well, we can, we, it, it's okay to take a consensus. That's all I'm asking.
I, I comment, and I'm a Port member, but I'm also Aberdeen Pioneer Association president, I may have had that job too long.
Oh, how they paid our dues, I'm so sorry.
I get asked this question. Every meeting I have, all right, I'm a member, and why, when is a museum gonna open? And why don't we have a museum? And why, what, what's going on? And if we're gonna ask businesses and private citizens to invest in this town, and the city council and the city and be investing, have the guts to invest in this town also. If you're not gonna invest in it, why should someone else? We got those people building the museum across the street from this one. We should support them by doing our part to revitalize the building, building, and put a museum in the visitor center. These people make this, this, drove this city, it's, if we don't invest, we don't pay taxes. They tighten our town, they have, have to raise their shop up. I'm going in the right direction, I hope, right now. And, yeah, everybody I see, and I represent a bunch of class spaces, fifty years, fifty-five years, and they say the same thing. Why don't we have a museum? Where'd all the money go? Don't ask me. So we need to take action.
Am I wrong when I say that that money from the HHS is more related to suit about the museum? I mean, I feel, I feel, I mean, it feels like every time I talk about it, like, like the city is literally gonna go bankrupt until that museum, museum burns down and somehow builds us out or something, so. It just seems like, wow, see why there's such a, such a hard time to take the money to, to the city through an ancient thing from a burning museum and put it back into a museum?
From my perspective, it's, that we have other needs as well. And just trying to be fiscally responsible.
We've had other needs that were made whole with some of that funds.
But there is some funds available yet.
Yeah, there is.
We should consider maybe, you know, I mean, if this money comes through from the capital budget, that would be fantastic.
There are members here, you've not heard anything from. I'd like to hear what some of the other members of the council that have not spoken would like to say.
I will just say that I do support a museum, but I would like to see cost estimates and everything. So whatever Stacy can provide, that'd be great, but I don't think there's a single person up there that's not supportive of having a museum.
Okay, that's very nice to hear, so. I thank you from the board for your time and for hearing us out. I do ask for your consideration. I do know that, you know, I, I can hear the consensus to a certain extent, I won't ask for a show and answer. But thank you very much, please do consider it. And, you know, as I said, the city owns the building, fix it up regardless of what it's gonna be used for. Yes, I'd love to see it be used for a museum, but don't let it sit there there alone. Thank you for your time very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to mayor and council questions and comments, I think we went all through that, anything else?
Can I add something that, you know, in discussing this with the museum board and the museum subcommittee that was assigned to, that was tasked with creating this presentation? You know, I talked also, I talked to them about like the possibility of a revenue stream of some sort and the, their activity in fundraising and, and being active with, supporting themselves as well. And so they're very open to that as well, whether it's like, you know, one, another thing is that we own the space next to the Salvation Army building, so where the food bank is currently, right next door.
Right, and, and they're supposedly moving this year.
Right, and we had talked about like with the renovation of the building and possibly moving the Parks Department over there. So they would, we would also make up funds that way because we're currently paying rent. And so there, I think there are different ways that we could save money as well. And there are ways, I think, that with renting out spaces or whatever that could look like. I think there's also an opportunity as we are determining how to use the space to also bring in revenue as well.
There's just so much potential and so many possibilities, that's a huge, huge space, so I think, you know, there's a lot of conversations to be had about that.
I wanna point out, the other thing that museums do is it makes our town more attractive to live in. And that brings people in. I'm meeting people, I, the last twenty years, I've met people from all over the country that have come to Aberdeen. And they were coming from out of state, now they're coming more from the Puget Sound area. And those people are here for a year, they've been here a year or two, they go, holy smokes, you know, you need a museum here. And they wanna work for the museum. So I, there's a couple things, I can't say enough about the volunteers that are working on the museum. You can't put a value in what those people have done and what they're doing right now. Very, very dedicated, there's more people out there that want to do things, but it's kind of limited right now. But it's not just the money you get out of the building, it's the money that you draw into the town when people come by and, like, I dodge. Diamond, Aberdeen, there's a beautiful museum there. Toronto's across the street, it feeds on each other. You go down Riverside, Olson Museum's spectacular. We've got five thousand pictures sitting up in the state archives right now. By comparison, Olson Museum has maybe seventy-five, eighty thousand pictures. So there's a lot of work to do, so it's really neat to see the people working. And, and Deanna's exactly right, is you just gotta, you gotta try to start taking those steps. The first step would be to get the building suitable to move the artifacts over it. The next step would make the building suitable so that people can go in there. I'd say the volunteers would be the first to go in. And they're working, you walk and drive down the street, you can see them. Look for other opportunities in the side park or upstairs or, it, it just feeds on itself. I guess my point is, there's a lot more money than just what comes outside of there, inside the floor.
Okay, thank you. Next steps, I think we kinda covered that. All right, anything else? See nothing, Willinger?